Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the April 12th Legislative Session of the Salisbury City Council. At this time, I'd ask that you join me in a moment of silent meditation or prayer. Thank you. At this time, I would ask Deputy City Administrator Andy Kitro to give the proclamation. Andy? You're on mute, Andy.
Usually so good about that stuff. So it's an interesting proclamation we have this month. Being a parent in having a couple of kids and being married to a child psychologist, and then also running youth programs for several years when I worked for the county, understanding the importance of children's well-being, their health, and understanding what we're proclaiming today, I'm discussing is very, you know, near and dear to me, and I think a lot of people also in this room. So I'll go ahead and get started. Whereas today's children represent tomorrow's leaders, and the city of Salisbury remains steadfast in its commitment to ensuring the safety and security of our children, families, and communities. And whereas Wacomiko County Child Advocacy Center reports that more than 600 of the youngest and most farmlers citizens receive support each year for abuse through its child advocacy center, and whereas we acknowledge that we must work together as a community to increase awareness about child abuse and how we can, we prevent it because prevention remains the best defense for our children, and whereas effective child abuse prevention and support efforts for children and families succeed because of the partnerships created among human service agencies, law enforcement, legal agencies, medical and mental health providers, schools, faith-based and civic organizations, businesses, and other community organizations and agencies dedicated to improve the lives of children. Whereas all citizens everywhere share responsibility in preventing child abuse through diligent report of suspected cases of child neglect and maltreatment. And whereas the National Child Abuse Prevention Month observed throughout the nation each April provides a time to raise awareness about child abuse and neglect, and to encourage individuals and communities to support children and families. Now therefore, I, Andy Kitro, Deputy City Administrator of the city of Salisbury, do hereby proclaim April 2021 as Child Abuse Prevention Month. Now, and we encourage all citizens to learn more about the various forms of child abuse that endanger vulnerable young lives and how to recognize the signs and where to report it because children are our most valuable resource.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Andy. Well said, and a great, a great thing to do for our city. At this time, I'll call on our Sustainability Coordinator, Alyssa Hastings, to introduce our guest speaker. Alyssa, you have the floor.
Thank you, President Heath. Thank you all, and thanks for allowing us to be here tonight again with, with some great news. I'll let, I'll let Chris take it away in a minute, but I just will say I'm so, so thrilled to have this extra certification as part of our sustainability repertoire, and I'm really excited for all the partnerships that this new certification is going to help us bring in the city of Salisbury. So with that, I'd like to introduce Chris Everly. He's the Executive Director of the Maryland Bird Conservation Partnership.
Thanks, Alyssa. Yeah, let me get started here. Council President Heath, council members, city officials and employees, members of the press and public. Thank you for allowing the time on this very busy schedule tonight for this presentation. Bird City Maryland and the Maryland Bird Conservation Partnership are excited to announce that the city of Salisbury has satisfied the requirements for becoming a Maryland Bird City and the first on the eastern shore. The goal of the Bird City program is to make Maryland communities healthier for birds and for people. We support communities like Salisbury in their efforts to protect and manage green space, educate their citizens, build and erect nesting structures, landscape with native plants, and reduce threats to birds. Bird Cities bring people together, build community pride, and make communities a more desirable place to live for people and for birds. Salisbury is an incredible community. Your Bird City application is a testament to the city's efforts to make Salisbury the most desirable community on the eastern shore. If you'll allow me just to highlight a few things that stood out to us. Naylor Mill Forest Trail is the home of Salisbury's last remaining old growth forest with giant red oaks more than 100 years old. For years, it has been the home of excellent bike trails created by local naturalists and bike enthusiasts. The park is covered by the largest conservation easement inside any municipality in the state of Maryland, protecting more than 92 acres of old growth forest. Secondly, Salisbury is now a tree city, bee city, and a bird city. Three, Salisbury's Green Business Program certifies businesses for the green efforts. One of the criteria is using native plants in the business's landscaping. The city encourages native landscaping whenever possible and is seeking to expand bird and pollinator habitat wherever possible. Fourth, the Animal Health Building at the Salisbury Zoo is a LEED Silver Certified Building. Five, as of 2020, 13 of Wacomiko County's 24 schools are certified as Maryland Green Schools. Six, programs at the Ward Museum include an eBird Station, eBird Tuesdays, nature-based field trips, and bird-focused lectures. In addition, the museum is certified as a green center according to the standards of the Maryland Association of Environmental and Outdoor Education, one of only six centers on the eastern shore and 42 in the state of Maryland. And seventh and last, the city's bicycle network master plan has twin goals of establishing bicycling as a safe mode of transportation and mitigating carbon emissions. In a city that spans 14 square miles, bicycling has now become a viable transportation alternative. Salisbury is a leader in building dedicated space for walking, bicycling, and using transit, and encourages residents and visitors to choose sustainable, climate-smart options. And I say seventh and last, that is by far not the last. Those are just the seven that I wanted to highlight tonight. We want to recognize Alyssa Hastings and Amanda Pollak for shepherding the application process, which was quite a process that they handled marvelously. We also recognize the Tri-County Bird Club, Ward Museum of Wildfowl Art, and the City of Salisbury Green Team for their assistance throughout the entire application process. At this time, and Alyssa, I believe you have something there. At this time, we are very pleased to present the city of Salisbury with this plaque designating you as an official Bird City Maryland Community. We look forward to working with the city as you continue your outstanding work to make Salisbury a desirable place for its residents to live and work, and a welcome home for its resident and part-time bird populations. Thank you all, and congratulations on this fine achievement.
Chris, thank you very much. We have, I will, I will say, we have an amazing crew. We are so proud of the people that work for the city, and we appreciate your, your kind words, and thank you again for your, for your presentation. And I know that you have to jump, jump off to, to attend another matter, but thank you again on behalf of the council, Mayor Day, Assistant Mayor, Administrative Julia Glanz, and Andy Kitro, who, who is on the call today. So thank you, Chris. We appreciate it.
Thank you very much for allowing this presentation to go on, and congratulations again.
Well, I think we were so many different types of city right now, and the kindness city and everything else. I, I think that we're setting the right trend, and hopefully we can keep this going, and I encourage anything that we can do to protect the environment and improve the conditions for our citizens. We're better off, so keep up the good work. I'll now call for a motion in a second to adopt the legislative agenda.
So move. Second.
Mr. Boda, I think you, yeah, who is the second, please?
April.
April. Okay, thank you, April. I'll call the motion. All those in favor of the legislative agenda as presented, please signify by saying aye. Mr. Boda?
Aye.
Ms. Jackson?
Aye.
Ms. Blake?
Aye.
This is Gregory?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Legislative agenda is adopted by a vote of five to zero. I want to entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So move.
Second.
Ms. Blake, I believe, correct? No.
No, I think it was April and Michelle.
April and Michelle.
Mm-hmm.
Ms. Jackson, and this is Gregory. Good evening, Mrs. Nichols.
Good evening. On this evening's consent agenda, we have the March 1st, 2021 closed session minutes, March 8th legislative session minutes, March 15th closed session minutes, and March 15th work session minutes. Resolution number 3098 approving the appointment of Cynthia Lombardo to the Human Rights Advisory Committee for term ending April 2023. Resolution number 3099 approving the appointment of Logan Prushansky to the Human Rights Advisory Committee for term ending April 2023. Resolution number 3100 approving the reappointment of Scott Saxman to the Historic District Commission for term ending December 2023. Resolution number 3101 declaring that SBY Development Group LLC is eligible to receive enterprise Zoom benefits for property located at 229 West Main Street in Salisbury. And there is a request for the approval of manufacturing exemption for Smith's Interconnect Microwave Components, Inc., and also for Purdue Foods LLC. And that's it for the consent agenda.
Thank you, Mrs. Nichols. Questions or comments? Mr. Boda?
None.
Jackson?
None.
Ms. Blake?
None.
This is Gregory?
None.
I'll call the motion. All those in favor of the consent agenda as presented, please signify by saying aye. Mr. Boda?
Aye.
Ms. Jackson?
Aye.
Ms. Blake?
Aye.
This is Gregory?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. The consent agenda is approved by a vote of five to zero. And I see we have Cynthia Lombardo on the call with us tonight, and Logan Prushansky. I do not see Mr. Saxman, but I want to thank you all for volunteering for these important committee. This is what makes our city great. I've always said that our greatest asset in the city is our citizens. So thank you very much for what you do, and, and hope you have a successful term. Thank you. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve the award of bids.
So move.
Second.
Ms. Jackson and Mr. Boda? Good evening, Mrs. Miller.
Good evening. The first item this evening is an award of bid for a request for proposal number, number eight dash two one dash one one one. This is for the SCADA maintenance for the waterworks facilities. What this would include is routine maintenance, emergency repair, operator training, parts and accessories, and other necessary smaller upgrades as needed. Our department put the proposals out at the end of January, January 27th. Proposals were opened on March 5th. We did receive a total of five proposals, two of which scored technically high enough to have the pricing opened. We do wish to make an award to both of the top two scoring firms, and then at, as tasks are needed, issue purchase orders as needed. So the Department of Procurement does concur with the recommendations submitted by the Department of Water Works to process an award to both of the two top-ranked proposers, one being Shoreight Controls from Princess Anne, Maryland, and the other being Keystone Engineering from Frazier, Pennsylvania.
Thank you. Questions or comments? Mr. Boda?
No questions. Thank you for your work on this.
Ms. Jackson?
No questions.
Ms. Blake?
No questions.
This is Gregory?
No questions.
I have no questions as well. So, yep.
And we have one more item. It's a declaration of surplus. It's for police vehicles. All vehicles have very, very high mileage. Some are not functional at all, and any cost to bring the vehicles back into service would far exceed the value of the vehicles. So we would like to dispose of them and, and see what money we can obtain as salvage.
Thank you. Questions? Mr. Boda?
Um, I see Chief's got her screen up. I guess, I assume we are planning to replace the upcoming budget. And I know that that's next week, but I'm, I'm hoping we have plans to replace those.
Chief?
We do, sir. And we, we do have plans to replace some of those vehicles. And hopefully that you'll be getting that package next week in the presentation.
Thank you. Ms. Jackson?
I concur with Mayor. No other questions.
Thank you. Ms. Blake?
No questions.
Thank you, Mrs. Gregory?
No questions.
I have no questions as well. I will now call the motion. All those in favor of the award of bids, please signify by saying aye. Mr. Boda?
Aye.
Ms. Jackson? April, you're muted.
Aye.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Ms. Blake?
Aye.
This is Gregory?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. The award of bids is approved by a vote of five to zero. Thank you, Mrs. Miller.
Thank you.
I'll now entertain a motion to approve ordinance number 2657 for the second reading.
So move.
Second.
Ms. Jackson, Mr. Boda? Mr. Sullivan, good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Council President. Good evening, council members, everyone else during tonight's meeting. My name is Michael Sullivan. Ordinance number 2657, an ordinance in the city of Salisbury to accept federal grant funding from the Governor's Office of Crime Control and Prevention in the amount of $15,000 for Grant BJAG-2019-001 National Incident-Based Reporting System Training in amending the grant fund budget to appropriate these grant funds for NIBRS training. Whereas, the Governor's Office of Crime Control and Prevention has awarded the Salisbury Police Department $15,000 for the purpose of offsetting costs for training associated with the mandatory switchover to the National Incident-Based Reporting System. Whereas, on a national level, the National Incident-Based Reporting System will be replacing the current national system known as the Uniform Crime Report. Whereas, the National Incident-Based Reporting System and the Uniform Crime Report are processes utilized to collect and report crime data to the Federal Bureau of Investigation via the Maryland State Police. And whereas the conversion to the National Incident-Based Reporting System is a national mandate, whereas appropriations necessary to execute the purpose of this grant must be made upon the recommendation of the mayor and the approval of forfeits for the Council of the City of Salisbury. Now therefore, be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Salisbury, Maryland, the city accepts the aforementioned grant funds to be spent as outlined in the underlying grant agreement, which is attached to this ordinance. It further ordained by the City Council of the City of Salisbury, the city's grant fund budget be and hereby is amended as follows. One, increase the Brine Memorial JAG Revenue Account 10500-423101 XXXX by $15,000. Increase the SPD Training School Expense Account 01, excuse me, 10500-5555504 XXXX by $15,000. And be it further ordained, this ordinance shall take effect from and after the date of its pass.
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. Questions or comments? Mr. Boda?
Very grateful we could get a grant for training, especially when there's something changing over, so that's, that's a good thing.
Thank you. Ms. Jackson?
Grateful, and I have no other comments.
Thank you. Mrs. Ms. Blake?
Um, it's wonderful. No comments.
Thank you. Mrs. Gregory?
Like everyone else, just glad we get these grants, so no other comments.
Thank you. Chief, if I could ask you for a favor, could you please just tell a little bit about the implications of this new system? As we, as you point out in one of our other meetings, this is has major implications relative to our crime numbers as they are reported. Can you please give us just a brief summary of that?
Yes, sir, and thank you for the opportunity to offer additional information. So we've, we've known that this change has been coming for years, and we are moving away from the UCR, Uniform Crime Reports, which the, is, is run by the Federal Bureau of Investigation. They track, they track eight different categories of Part I crimes, and they do this nationwide for agencies that volunteer their data. Moving into the National Incident-Based Reporting System, or NIBR, as we refer to, we're now collecting a lot more data. So instead of just the eight major crimes, you're now looking at 24 different crime types plus, we are now moving away from a hierarchy of crime to include, instead of just the highest ranking crime that the officer is dispatched to investigate, now we are including information on all of the other crimes included in the incident. For example, we can go to a reported burglary and also take information, collect data, and report data to the FBI on other crimes that may have occurred within that burglary incident. So it goes beyond just the actual burglary itself of the residential dwelling, but we could also have an individual who's, let's say, stole a motor vehicle from the garage of the residence. That too would now be counted, tracked, and counted in this new reporting system. So as you can imagine, it was quite a different, quite, quite a lot of train that had to take place, both on the officer side and on the dispatch side, and also within-house, within our own records department on how to report on this new process. What we're hoping for, and what we've seen in jurisdictions that have already made the transition, is that you get a lot more data. So we can figure out a lot more things. We can look at things with a better analytic eye and, and make better decisions on deployment opportunities that we may have coming up.
Great. Thank you, Chief. Excellent explanation. I think that it's obviously going to be more work, and we appreciate that and wish you the best with, with this process.
Thank you.
I'll now call the motion. All those in favor of ordinance number 2657 for the second reading, please signify by saying aye. If you're opposed, say nay. Mr. Boda?
Aye.
Ms. Jackson?
Aye.
Ms. Blake?
Aye.
This is Gregory?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Ordinance number 2657 for the second reading is approved by a vote of five to zero. I want to entertain a motion to approve ordinance number 2658 for the second reading.
So move.
Second.
Ms. Blake and Mrs. Gregory?
No. Ms. Jackson?
Oh, I'm sorry. My, I don't have my hearing aids, and I'm sorry. I apologize. Ms. Jackson, got you. Mr. Sullivan?
Hey, Mr. Council, Mr. Council President. This is ordinance number 2658, an ordinance in the city of Salisbury accepting grant funds from the Maryland State Office of Crime Prevention and Youth and Victim Services in the amount of $24,000 under the FY21 Police Recruitment and Retention Program. And amending the grant fund budget to appropriate these grant funds for payment of retention bonuses to eligible Salisbury police officers. Whereas, the Maryland State Office of Crime Prevention Youth and, excuse me, Crime Prevention Youth and Crime Victim Services has awarded the Salisbury Police Department $24,000 for the purpose of police retention. Whereas, the Salisbury Police Department has identified 51 officers in three categories that will benefit from this award based on tenure. Whereas, 11 officers with one to three years of service to the city of Salisbury will receive $610 as a retention incentive. Whereas, 30 officers with nine to 19 years of service to the city of Salisbury will receive $443 as a retention incentive. Whereas, 10 officers with 20-plus years of service to the city of Salisbury will receive $400 as a retention incentive. Whereas, in FY20, officers with three to five years of service to the city of Salisbury received $1,000 as a retention incentive, and officers with six to eight years of service received a retention incentive of $800. Whereas, officers holding the rank of captain and above did not receive incentives in FY20 and will not receive funds in FY21 under this award. Whereas, officers in the police academy, officers with less than one year of service, and officers that declined the funds under the FY20 grant award are not receiving funds under this award. Whereas, officers will be required to sign a one-year contract of commitment to remain with the city of Salisbury Police Department for one year after receiving awarded funds. Whereas, the exact amount that each eligible officer receives in a particular tenure category could slightly increase if eligible officers decline the retention incentive award. Whereas, it is the desire of the Salisbury Police Department that this incentive, along with other incentives that the Salisbury Police Department already has in place, will encourage officers to remain employed in the city of Salisbury. Whereas, acceptance of the grant funds is subject to general and special conditions as outlined in the attached grant award. Whereas, appropriations necessary to execute the purposes of this grant must be made upon the recommendation of the mayor and the approval of forfeits of the Council of the City of Salisbury. Now, therefore, be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Salisbury, the city accepts the aforementioned grant funds to be spent as outlined in the underlying grant agreement connected here too. Be it further, further ordained by the City Council of the City of Salisbury, that the city's grant fund budget be and hereby is amended as follows. Increase the GOCCP Revenue Account by $24,000. Increase the SPD Salary Bonus Expense Account by $24,000. Be it further ordained, this ordinance shall take effect from and after the date of its final pass.
Right down.
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. Questions or comments? Mr. Boda?
No questions or comments.
Thank you. Ms. Jackson?
Um, it's a great incentive. I wish we had more to give them, to offer them. Um, but I have no more questions or comments.
Thank you. Ms. Blake?
I have no questions or comments.
Thank you. Mrs. Gregory?
No questions or comments.
Thank you, and I concur with Ms. Jackson. I will now call the motion. All those in favor of ordinance number 2658 for the second reading, signify by saying aye. aye. All those opposed, signify by saying nay. Mr. Boda?
Aye.
Ms. Jackson?
Aye.
Ms. Blake?
Aye.
This is Gregory?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Ordinance number 2658 for the second reading is passed by a vote of five to zero. I want to entertain a motion to approve ordinance number 2659 for the second reading.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Blake? This is Gregory.
Ms. Jackson?
You two sound awfully alike, so we're going to have to figure out something here.
I'll just put my hand up.
That'll be good. Thank you, Ms. Jackson.
He's not looking at the screen.
Well, I'm trying to do the paperwork as I'm going. Okay, don't pick on me. It's a long night. Questions or comments? Mr. Boda?
No questions or comments.
Thank you. Ms. Jackson?
No questions or comments.
Thank you. Ms. Blake?
No questions or comments.
Mrs. Gregory?
No questions or comments.
Oh, Kim, it, trying to, I guess, I guess Michael needs to read the...
Yes. I jumped the gun. Mr. Sullivan, would you read the last ordinance, please?
That's quite all right. I assume that I was so bad at reading the first two that you were just getting me all together on the paragraph. Is that, so go ahead and do it for posterity's sake. I will.
Just jump on, just jump on with the rest of them. That's fine.
Look, it would not be the worst insult I fielded today by a long mile. All right. So ordinance number 2659, an ordinance of the city of Salisbury, Maryland to abandon an area of land being the alley connecting Washington Street and Eastern Shore Drive. Whereas, the city of Salisbury, Maryland authorized the transfer of ownership of a small residual lot that was deemed to be a non-buildable parcel of land via Resolution Number 2819, which was signed on March 13th, 2018, to Union Realty LLC. And whereas, the properties which ordered the alley are owned by Union Realty LLC and Arapahoe Realty LLC, both companies having the same managing member, Michael C. Dunn. Whereas, the alley being closed is identified as parcel one, parcel two, and parcel three, as shown on the plaque entitled Alley Closing Washington Street, Eastern Shore Drive, attached as Exhibit A. Whereas, the owner of the land adjoining parcel one and parcel three, which will receive said parcels, is Union Realty LLC, and the owner of the land adjoining parcel two, which will receive said parcel, is Arapahoe Realty LLC. Whereas, the city of Salisbury Department of Infrastructure and Development has determined that the aforementioned area of land is no longer needed for use by the public, and the city believes it is in the best interest of the city to abandon the aforementioned area of land, indeed parcel one, parcel two, and parcel three to the adjoining property owners as stated above. Whereas, the alley was intended to be transferred as part of the previous land transfer. Whereas, the Salisbury Charter SC11-2 gives the city of Salisbury charge of all public waste in the city of Salisbury. Whereas, SC16-8 allows the city of Salisbury to abandon or otherwise dispose of property that is not saleable. Whereas, the city solicitor has prepared post quick claim deeds to convey the alley cobbles which are attached to it as Exhibit B. Whereas, the Director of Infrastructure and Development provided the city council with the recommendation of proposed alley abandonment at the March 5th, 2021 city council work session. Now therefore, be it ordained by the city council of the city of Salisbury, Maryland, the city of Salisbury hereby abandoned the 1,853 square foot area comprising the alley, parcel one, parcel two, and parcel three, and that the mayor and the city of Salisbury is hereby authorized to execute the attached deeds to convey to the adjoining property owner the city's right, title, and interest in the abandoned alley. Be it further ordained, this ordinance shall take effect immediately.
Thank you. We've already asked for the comments, so we'll go right to the vote. If you are in favor of ordinance number 2659 for the second reading, please signify by saying aye. If you are opposed, signify by saying nay. Mr. Boda?
Aye.
Ms. Jackson?
Aye.
Ms. Blake?
Aye.
This is Gregory?
Aye.
The chair votes aye. Ordinance number 2659 is approved by a vote of five to zero. Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. At this time, we will take public comments and comments from the council. Following those comments, the council will convene in closed session to obtain legal advice on a legal matter. And then we will come back from the closed session following the close of the session and report to the public. So right now, Mr. Kettrow, do we have any requests for comments from the public?
I've not seen anything pop up in the chat for comments, but I would give the opportunity right now to anybody to shoot me a comment or just kind of raise your hand and you can provide a comment at this moment.
It doesn't seem like there's any comments, so why don't we start with, well, why don't we start with you, Mr. Kettrow? And do you have any, anything for the good of the order?
Just, just to real quick, as we know recently, there's been orders from the governor about opening up the mass vaccination site for kind of our first come, first served, anybody over the age of 16 to get vaccinated. So we want to encourage people to continue, take advantage of that opportunity while we have vaccine, get vaccinated. We think it's a great opportunity for people to take advantage of, so we're going to continue to encourage that citywide. And then second, a few weeks back, we recommended some legislation go to the state. It has made it through the state and now just awaiting the governor's signature. And when that's signed off on this, the council will see the Horizon program return to them for an official ordinance so we can get that program moving forward. So really excited about Annapolis joining on with that and seeing how that's going to improve our efforts in the downtown area with development. There's only two comments.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Mr. Boda?
Really, really good to see the, the Horizon program making it through the General Assembly. I know that there was a, a few people trying to get involved in it, but I, I think, I think overall, I think we know it's, it's an understand that it's a great program and it's going to make a, a positive impact on, on downtown. Very good to see adding in the bird's designation as a bird city. And my wife, we, we love birds, so we have bird feeders, so we have, a blue jay likes to come. And so, so we enjoy it as a city. I think it kind of just, it fits in with, you know, our, our zoo and our park as the heart of our city, and it just seems like a natural fit as, as to who we are as, as a city. And, and it also reminded me of my, my principal from high school, Mr. Starnes in Tuscaloosa High School in Waynesville, North Carolina. Every spring, he had a speech that he would give that was called "The Sap is Rising." And, and he would talk about the sap is rising, the birds and the bees and, and all of that stuff. So we, looks like we, we check all those boxes as a city, as, as we are one of the fastest growing cities in the state and in the country. So good to see all that. And I, I am going to get my second COVID shot on Thursday. So I took a vacation day on Friday, just in case, so.
Thank you. Thank you, Meir. Appreciate it. April?
And as we are a bird city, I am an avid bird lover. I have one that resides with me. And I love my prissy. Her name is Prissy, because she is prissy. But I would just like to say to the constituents of cities and the citizens of the city of Salisbury, please get your COVID shots, get your vaccines. Please. I mean, if I can get them, I know anybody, I'm petrified of needles. So if I can get them, I know everybody should be able to get them. And remain, and continue to be safe. Just be safe. Wear your mask, continue to wear your mask, even if you've got the COVID. Everybody has not gotten that vaccine, so you cannot take that chance of maybe getting it again or spreading it or whatever. Just be reminded that social distance, mask-wearing, sanitizing, stay safe. We're at a point now where I think we've let our, let our hands down and just say, okay, we're free, but we're not free. We're not free until this is completely over, so people be mindful of that. Stay safe.
Thank you, April. Angela?
I would very excited to report that this weekend with our local restaurants and businesses were packed. There was 45-minute waiting periods at most of the restaurants downtown. And it was a wonderful sight to see. You know, with the limited seating inside, there was lines outside, there was people waiting in their cars. It was pretty phenomenal, so that was really nice to see. Of course, and like always, if you're healthy enough, please donate blood. Your gift, part of blood can go to multiple people. So you're given a gift of life when you donate your blood.
Thank you, Angela. This is Gregory.
I just want to reiterate what others have said, that, you know, if you can get your shot, everybody's eligible over the age of 16. Please go get it. I got my second shot on Thursday. Knocked me down Friday and Saturday, but I would much rather go through that, through that than having to be hospitalized for COVID. It's well worth it. So, you know, like Meir did, plan for a day off or two, and then you'll be, you, you will be, you will feel so much better. And yeah, I, 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 I'm also, I'm looking forward to going to roadies. They've got slushies back, so I'm doing, that's, that's on the agenda this weekend. I am going this weekend. I didn't get to this past weekend, but I'm going this weekend. So yeah, go support the local businesses.
Thank you, Michelle. I would like to acknowledge our new council. Michael Sullivan, Mike and Ashley are on the, on the call with us. We're, we're glad you're here, and we welcome you and look forward to a long relationship with you. So thank you for what you did, and Michael, I'll try to be a little more attentive to making sure we don't skip you during the ordinance reading, so.
Thank you very much.
Would you like to make any comments?
You guys run a very good meeting.
Thank you. We try. We try.
We try.
Okay. If there's no other comments, I will entertain a motion to convene in closed session to consult with council to obtain legal advice on a legal matter in accordance with the Annotated Code of Maryland 3-305B7.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Jackson? Mr. Boda? All those in favor of entering into closed session, please signify by saying aye. Mr. Boda?
Aye.
Ms. Jackson?
Aye.
Ms. Blake?
Aye.
This is Gregory?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. We are now into closed session. Mark, we will put you in the waiting room, and then we'll get you back on. Thank you, everyone who waited. We have just come out of closed session to consult with legal counsel regarding a contract. And there are no other items for us to discuss. We've already have our comments for the good of the order, so at this time, our meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone. Have a great night.